Good evening, everyone. Glad to have all of you here in the room. Glad to have those of you online. And welcome to our Blue Ribbon Advisory Group panel. They don't look happy. A little smiles here, a little bit would be helpful. My name is Jackson. I'm the president of the CROA Board. And the way that this is going to work tonight is that because we have more than four CROA board members in the room, this meeting was noticed as a CROA board meeting. We also have one piece of business for the board to deal with. So at this time, what I'm going to do is call the meeting to order and ask if the meeting has been properly noticed.
It was properly noticed.
And do we have a quorum of the board?
You do have a quorum.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to read into, for the board, a motion to approve the replacement of the existing fire safety panel at Lakeside by Advanced Fire and Security, a amount of Is there a board member that would make that motion?
I will.
Cindy makes the motion. Is there a second? Bill?
Okay.
This is an emergency item that had to be paid for at Lakeside. Am I correct? And so we're being asked to take it out of the regular order of business. Any questions from board members?
This is the panel in the Jones Room?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right. Board members, if you would signify your approval by raising your hand. And I think we're 6-0 unanimous. David Anderson is not here. At this time, what I'm going to do is yield the chair to Dory Moyer, and she'll be running the balance of this meeting. We are finishing at 7:30, as my understanding, tonight. When we hit 7:30, Dory will, I hope, yield the chair back to me so that I can conclude the meeting. So with that, Dory, it's all yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reed. Thanks, Jackson. Okay, welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, and it's 6:03, I believe. Just want to thank you all for coming to the Celebration Hall Town Hall meeting. And at this time, I want to make sure that everyone who would like to have the opportunity to speak signs in and then checks the box that you'd like to speak. If you, if something comes up during the meeting and you decide you want to say something, you know, just go ahead and sign in over there. Or we will also, just at the end, just maybe have you raise your hand if you have additional comments, and we have time. And then we will reach out to those who are online and those who have called in. In a moment, we're going to have a short PowerPoint presentation by Paul Raskin. But in the meantime, I'd like to introduce the Celebration Hall Advisory Group. Paul Raskin, Paul Kinser, Dave Burlsmann, Dave Hume, Diana, and Tom Hall, and Vaughn Roberts, who's on talent, and myself, Dory Moyer. The advisory group was established and created by the CROA Board back in April. And we began meeting in May. Some of us knew each other, and some of us did not. But we began with two formal public meetings with the CROA Board. And basically, in short order, we realized we really needed to get busy and dig in and start our research. The CROA Board narrowed down 10 potential options to three locations for community, art, center, meeting rooms, flex space, office space, and so on. The team site was set up by Lauren and Paul to receive files, drawings, and data, and as well as comments and questions from residents. Over the past few weeks, we have requested engineering reports, and we sent extensive questionnaires to management. We've reviewed past community inputs regarding needs assessments. We participated in field trips, both here on location and other venues. And we spent time on research on a multitude of similar-sized venues that are currently used for arts and mixed-use community gathering spaces. Some of the things were paused and additional locations. So tonight, we are only going to focus on the three locations. And this is where you all come in. So I think most of you probably saw the, the report that was put together. And, and that is part one and two. That was online for you all to take a look at and review. Part three of the summary is going to be your input, community input. And after Paul's presentation, we want to hear from you. Our plan tonight is to listen and to record your thoughts, comments, and vision. We plan to incorporate all the comments to the best of our ability into the final summary. Questions outside of our directive can be filmed out. There's filled out on, there's some cards over there if you want to fill out questions. If we have time at the end, we can answer them. But we can also, if you want to raise your hand and ask, some of them we may be able to answer, some of them may not. And we will pass those on to management or the board to follow up at another time. So at this time, I introduce Paul, who has spent a great deal of time recording all the information gathered by this advisory group. And now you will see some of that in his PowerPoint presentation. Take it away.
I will take it away as soon as I make it work. And so it's clear, this isn't really my, my thing. This is a collective effort. Everyone here contributed both to the report and to this. And what you're about to see is really a condensation of the report, an opportunity for people who haven't had a chance to read it yet to see some of the graphics and have a better feel for what we're talking about and where we're talking about. So although I have the distinct pleasure of presenting this, it isn't my work so much. It is everyone's work here. And hopefully, by the time we're done, it will include your thoughts as well. So to start, we were appointed as an advisory group with very limited tasks. So as you ask your questions tonight, or you have your comments, realize that we were asked 15 questions about three specific properties and 15 questions generally about what a community center or a performing arts facility would be. We were to hold meetings with stakeholders. That includes you. And to do this all in 90 days, so we could plan vacations starting August 1st. And we're trying to do that. We're right in the middle now. So we're at the halfway point. So why are we talking only about community centers and performing arts facilities? These are the surveys that have been previously done. And the surveys consistently place both of those at the top of the list. Certainly, they are the top of the list of indoor facilities. The only thing that comes out higher than these two facilities is a garage or parking garage, which we have nothing to do with, and that's someone else's advisory committee Sunday. So we're talking just about these two things and nothing more. Community center and performing arts facility. The three facilities that we were directed to are this building that you're in, the 851 Building, Lot B, which we'll look at a little bit more closely, which is out in the civic corridor next to the dog park, and the theater that's downtown. And I think that developed because there appeared to be some interest on both sides in the possibility of whether CROA would engage in having that facility as part of its, its recreational facilities. So we're limited to those three things. Some of, I've read elsewhere. Other people suggest other areas. That's for another day. Or you are certainly welcome to talk about it even today. But that's not within the orbit of what this committee has been asked to do. So we filed this report. If you hadn't had a chance to read it, it's online, and you can read it. It's pretty long. A lot of it can be condensed into what we're producing right now. And that is, we were asked to define three key terms. First, what's a community center? People have different visions for what a community center could be. We're taking the broadest view. It's a gathering place. Whoops. It's a gathering place for activities of interest, for organized activities. And you know you have all those organized activities here, but we actually think there's another group here that needs to be considered. And those who are not part of organized activities, freestyle. Someone in this community should be able to go into a community center alone without having joined something, just to have fun, to meet other people, maybe to join something later. But we think that's equally important, that not every inch of your community facility should be taken up by an organized activity. And lastly, it meant it can include the other concept of performing arts facility. I don't know that this is big enough for that, but there certainly are places in which a community center and a performing arts facility are all in one building or next door to each other. So that's what we consider a community center to be. What do we mean by performing arts facility? Again, we're taking the broadest possible view. It's a building for entertaining an audience by the exhibition of the arts. We've listed just about anything we could think of here, from acting to mime, vintage movies, creation of art on stage, an exhibition of it. That doesn't mean we're telling you that we think all of those things should go into such a facility. It's just they might. And it's to open the floor, the possibility that such a facility can handle all of those if demand were to be there. Lastly, who's the audience? Again, we take the broad view. Everyone, every resident, child, adult, senior, families and singles should be able to come to either of these facilities and use them, and not just feel like it's something that they're paying for and never get in the door. So that's the approach we took from the earliest pages of the report. The 851 Building, we're in it right now. For those who are online, and perhaps some of you who are here, you don't even realize it is really just a small cutout in a big piece of property that belongs to the Osceola School Board. It's just this little piece of land that's bounded on one side by a driveway that belongs to the school board, and a sidewalk that belongs to the CDD, and a parking lot that's part of this building, and the preserve area where there's a setback, and you really can't build too far into that. And so it's a fairly limited space, and they did a really good job of building something into that limited space. But that's where it is and what it is. We went back to the original building plans from 1996, when this was built to be the Celebration Academy, the school. It was before the school was built. And that's why the restrooms are so large. It was to handle a school. And it takes up, as you'll see, a fair amount of the other side of the building. This was the build-out. As you can see, the architects were doing their best to put a building, a usable building, in an odd little corner of a big piece of property, which was surrounded by other barriers. And they did it. And here we are. And that's the original building, which was expanded a little bit. I want to walk you through this building so you have a better sense of it. If you turned around behind you, those in the audience, there's actually an air wall. But there's more behind that air wall. So we'll take a better look at it in a second. But what you need to know about this building was that it was purchased by CROA in 2005, renovated back then to handle the community, which almost stopped at the point of this building. There was very little artisan park build-out done at that point, no Carlyle condominiums, no spring lake, no Island Village, and a lot of the homes that were between other homes hadn't been built out either. It was really meant for a smaller group, a much smaller group. The realities currently are that this building is too small. There are dozens, we've been given a list of dozens of partner programs and committees that vie for what's really essentially three or four meeting areas, and they pretty much need or want to meet at the same time. So that's one reality of the building. There's constant rescheduling of these. Management is constantly having to reschedule because it's a board meeting, there can't be something else. Board meetings and major committees take high priority here, and that's what, the way it should be. And they're moving out the others who would like to be using this space. There's just plain more space can be required as Island Village opens up. For those of you who don't know, it will have service areas. And for people who don't live in service areas and are not familiar with that, service areas are maintained by management. So they're going to need manpower to be able to handle, just like they handle all the other service areas that have existed, a whole other area. So you see the needs here, in this building at least. It's getting tight. It's, it's something that, looking forward, you want to be thinking about. So this is the building. This is the walkthrough of the building. You're in it. It's actually just the evacuation plan off the wall over there. But we are in part of these three rooms. We're in two of them here, for those who are in it. These are big meeting rooms. If you look closely, there's another one just beyond this. There's also, you'll see two smaller meeting areas, like executive office kinds of things that are right outside. That's where the arrows are. And so that's pretty much all the meeting room space that you have in this building, with the exception of an almost freestanding building that's right behind it. Some people just think it's part of it, but it's actually a freestanding building called the Activities Room, which is back there. And to look at it, it's got a wood floor. It looks like it could have been a school gymnasium, except the ceiling's not tall enough. This committee actually looked at it and almost to a person said, why doesn't that become an activity room for teens? For those who are concerned about our students, particularly from the K-8, gathering downtown, wouldn't this be a nice place to have them go after school and use it as flex space so it's available for seniors at other times? It sounds like a great idea, but the reality is, if you look at the calendar, there are five different partner organizations. Those are organizations that pay for their time here. People pay to do something like yoga, or exercise, or dance. And part and profit of that, or some money from that, comes to, to CROA. All of those partner programs would have to be relocated, rescheduled, or something. So it's not so easy to say, just turn it into an activity room. But it sure looks like a good place for our kids to spend their time, particularly the ones who are right, coming from right next door after school into an activity room. So let's continue the rest of the building. The rest of the buildings across the way, you've never, may never have been back there, but that's the staff offices. It's a pretty good-sized space, except for one thing, two things. There's a bathroom and a mechanical room that fill up all of that red space. And it just, it turns it in from what was a nice triangle to almost a C-shaped set of areas, and it limits what you can do with it. So that's just the reality of that space, and we'll talk a little bit more about it. There's also the grand hall. At one time, we thought, the grand hall weighs right out here. We thought that maybe, we'd heard that there were plans, you could build the second floor in there and put some office space in there. I think nearly everyone has now come to the conclusion that that would be disproportionately expensive, if not impossible to accomplish. But it's something that we've raised in the report because it was mentioned to us as a possibility, you could gain more room in this space, building by adding on either a little bit horizontally or vertically. So that's the grand hall. Now, the space needs for staff and programs coming up at this time, their current needs, they still have meeting space needs to reduce the overcrowding, space and time for partner programs, staff office spaces, Island Village opens out and builds out, and onsite storage to reduce offsite storage. I didn't mention this, but there's storage of, of things. We pay rent to put them in storage facilities because there's no room in this building. So the idea would be, could you get that under a roof that you own? We'd like to try to do that. So we go back to the drawing board. I just did this for illustrative purposes. That's the drawing board Pat Lawson used in 2005, once she tried to figure out what to do with this building in the first place. And she turned it into this. So back to the drawing board. We know that it's important to do two things. We think it is, at least. We think it's important that the staff of, of CROA and management that interface with the public need to be in the same building with these meeting rooms. You just don't want to have them someplace else and have to come here or housed here and having to travel someplace else. They carry materials in and out as they go from meeting to meeting. We think co-location is an important thing that should be sought after, if at all possible. And then it's, to the extent we're talking about a community center, this building, we're talking about building on the remainder of the lot. You saw it's an odd-shaped lot and has odd limits. Even it means a second story in one or more places. So this is the way it works. We give this report to management, and days later, back comes drawings on, hey, how about this? For anyone who thought that we just had a preconceived plan of what's going to happen here, that's both not true. And the only thing that I'm finding is preconceived is that management gets back with us with everything we ask. So here we have a set of drawings that show how, for example, you might extend this area So this is from Danny Bumpus, who's here in the audience. He talks about raising, going out 12 feet on that side of the, and going all, the whole distance. Now, it's, that's not a big space, to be honest. It gives you some square footage, but it's 12 feet wide. And unless you're just making this room 12 feet bigger, you're just limiting yourself to a 12-foot-wide set of rooms out there. But that's one possibility. A second possibility is to add on at the back where the activity room is. And that's more free, free, open area where you could even go up a couple of stories or more if you needed to. And so he has laid out that as a possibility. And then going to the opposite side of the building where the staff offices are now, where the windows are, to adding space over there, like you're adding it over here. Again, you're not getting big chunks of, of space with this, but you're getting space, some space, and it may, may be useful space. And then at the front, not so much building on at the front, but reorganizing the front, taking out some offices and making it more of a flex space to give you more open workspace. And then, and then also, Danny has the idea, but he thinks this is, I'll use the word impractical and I think expensive, but, and that is to be laying a second story on top of this building in the area that I haven't read. Actually, it would include the blue area, I think, as well. Once you start building up, you have to take into account, this building wasn't meant to be built that way. And so you have to look at reinforcing, reinforcements, and taking the roof off. It both becomes expensive, and in reality, it often means that your staff is in someplace else while the construction takes place. So these are just realities, but we wanted to share these with you because these are not even in the report yet, because they're just coming out within the last 24 hours. Yes, Danny? Can I ask you to hold just, I don't want to be speaking forever, and eventually I want to hear from everybody else. Can I ask you to do it then? This is Lot B. If you don't know what Lot B is, I'm going to show you Lot B. Lot B is way out by the dog park. It's that little street that goes behind the library. There's a library there, Lot B. Then C, which is the CDD maintenance facility. D, which has yet to be built out. And E is the fields that have been built out there. But what you need to know about Lot B when we talk about it is, most of Lot B is already in use. That's also where the dog park is. About three-quarters of Lot B is already the dog park. And so it's a very small piece of Lot B. Little bit better view of that. That's dog park, that's the CDD facility, and that's all there is left of Lot B right now. I don't know this for sure, but I was told back in the day that the dog park was actually supposed to encompass that, but to save money, they just decided not to take it all away and left it open. And that's good. It'll have, it's a valuable piece of property, and it can have some uses. But it's also, in reality, probably best for an outdoor activity space. It faces 417. It's noisy. It's right by the toll booth. Trucks are constantly stopping as they go through. The maintenance vehicles from the CDD go through three or four times a day. Throughout the day, the maintenance, the CDD employees who drive their own cars park all over there. So it's a, it's a noisy, sort of a messy area. But worse than that, that's Lot B. You see that white area and a little bit at the bottom? That's a required stormwater retention pond. And an easement required by no fewer than five permits. South Florida Water Management District, CDD, a whole bunch of Osceola County. Everyone gave permits to use this land with the understanding that that piece of easement would remain in place. So it cuts Lot B down to a very small area, about three-quarters of an acre. That's all you have, including what you would need for parking on that area. It's just not extremely useful to try, and it's not the right place for a performing arts theater, probably not big enough for the right place for a community center. So we just said, valuable piece of property, save it for something that's appropriate down the road. And this is the engineering report, which told us what I'm telling you about, the permitting and the size of the park. Lastly, the town theater, Town Center Theater. So I want to walk you through this because no one really gets to see more than that, the front door. We got to go inside, and I'd heard horror stories about what we, and to a person, I think we were shocked to find the horror stories were a myth, because it looked pretty darn good. They took down only the price list on the wall, but virtually everything in the lobby remains. The iconic flooring, the concession stand, the soda machines are still there. It's just unbelievable how much was left behind. And, and it looks pretty darn good. The air conditioning, we were told, has been running the entire time that AMC has been gone, that they ran the air conditioning and had a maintenance man come in once a month. And it looks, honestly, it just, it looks like someone sealed the time capsule last week and decided to re-enter it this week. It's looking pretty good. So to the left is Theater One. You walk in, for those who were never in it, that's Theater One. The screen doesn't have a drop of mildew or staining on it. It looks just like they closed it last night and reopened it today. The seats are all there. There's a balcony. Those are the seats from the back and the screen. Those are the seats. We sat in them, decided they were comfortable. The armrests go up, you can put your sodas into them if you want. It really looked remarkably well-kept. That's the balcony area. Even the carpeting, which I would have expected would have butter from popcorn stains all over it, none. It was just a nice, clean facility, the kind of thing that if they wanted to open tomorrow, or someone wanted to open tomorrow, you wouldn't have to do a lot of cleanup on that. You might decide you wanted to make some different colors here and there, but it's in pretty good shape. That's the lobby area that we walked into, the restrooms, and they were in fine shape. The other theaters on the opposite side, it's a replicant. The first theater is twice as big, about twice as big, as the smaller theater on Side Two. Other than being a little bit smaller, it's virtually the same, and in equally good condition. So we went upstairs, and I'd never been upstairs to a projection booth. I always thought it was a booth. It's actually about a third of the upstairs area, and from side to side. And with tons of equipment left there. There are projectors there, there's sound system equipment there. One of our members, Tom Hall, has a lot of sophistication in the area of sound equipment, says this is top-notch equipment. You know, speakers are still in the wall. It's just been left behind. And so there's a picture of a little bit of that electronic equipment. I tend to think the projector's out of date, but they left it there. That was a very expensive projector, and it's still there. And so the upstairs projection booth is the full width of the floor and has a projection on one side for one theater, one side for the other theater, and on both sides, they just left an incredible amount of electronic equipment behind. If it works, you could literally turn the key and it'll start up with some use immediately. Even when you come back downstairs, behind the concession stand is a sort of small kitchen area with a cleanup sink. And it was washed and cleaned. I mean, it was just surprising. Other than the few things that they removed, a lot was left behind. So it's there. This is a view of the back of the ticket booth. I wanted you to see that because when you look at it from the other angle, you realize it's also a usable space for an office. It's a pretty deep space, it has value, and it's well-lit. And that's the splash, splash pad that's across from the park. So Danny Bumpus had given us quick plans on what you could do with this based upon just one person's good idea. And, and that's what we started with. And because if you have eight people in celebration in a room, you have at least 16 opinions. That's the way this committee was. We said we could do different things, and we, we'll show you what we thought about. But he came up with putting a stage in the larger theater and on the right side to turn that into office space. There's a lot of space already there. Underneath the stairs, underneath the seating, there are a couple of big conference areas that are already there. So you're working around that. But we decided, no, no, we're smarter. We're going to wipe that space out and see what else we could come up with. We all agree that if you're doing something with the big, big part, you want to do the stage. But we came up with other ideas for the other areas that you see in blue. And our ideas are no better than yours, and not even better than Danny's, and they're not better than anybody's. The ideas just come up as good ideas, but this is what we came up with. You could leave Theater One alone, keep it as a theater. You could show movies, podcasts, creative arts displays. You could add a stage, lighting and sound for possible live performances. And none of this has to be done on day one. You could start and grow into this theater. You can add a retractable screen so that the stage would be more useful. The screen is sort of up against the wall, and you'd like to get behind it, so you might want a dropping retractable, retractable screen. And it could be used for artistic exhibitions and meetings. For Theater Two, we started off with the idea of being of office space, but we also thought you could just keep it as a theater. And some of the suggestions that we're going to read to you, some quick summaries of what your other neighbors had said, who couldn't be here but sent emails. Let's keep it as a theater. Renovate it into a flex space, and I'll show you an example of that in a second. A multi-use gym floor, recreation space for residents for partner programs. Remember, I told you we're running out of space here for them, and if you wanted to have an activities room to put the kids in in the back here, well, then you need a place for the partner programs to go. Well, this might be a good place for them to be able to go, because we'd have a similar kind of a floor. Meetings and parties, you can put tables and chairs in there. You have a setup kitchen right next door. We've even had a suggestion of an esports venue, which I had to look up because I didn't even know what that was, but it does sound interesting. And kids are apparently into it, so maybe it is something you want to explore. So Danny came back with another set of plans for us, real quick. Like in two days, you get another set. This is, these are like, we're not talking about architectural plans. We're talking about a very talented person who can draw better than I can write. And he just pencils these in. He shows you what you could And he just pencils these in. He shows you what you could do with that flex space. Keeping offices where there are office space now or conference rooms, all of that is still there in this plan. I think the point of all of this is, and he even shows some office space toward the front. The point is it's very flexible. Once you decide you want to do something, it's very flexible. What you do. I show you these pictures, compliments of Casey Greitner, who many of you may know, who from the Front Porch Theater, Inc., had been trying to work with the theater to open a dinner theater, which was not a business plan he'd been able to make go yet, at least there. But he's kind enough to share with us these renderings, which I, I think are, give you a better sense of what the theater would look like with a stage and a screen from the other side. It, it's easier than looking just at the floor plans. And this was his idea for a dinner theater on the second side where there were tables, chairs, and he would be projecting on that screen, which is, that screen is fine too. And he actually maintained some of the seats up on the upper level, some of the area up there. So. I want to close this down. It's talking way longer than I wanted to, but I really wanted to give you, try to summarize for you what we have spent close to 10 meetings and, and millions of phone calls and emails talking about. The management's involvement as far as working ceremony is what will follow what we're doing. We're sort of feeding to them what we are thinking and they are to be doing as they are. Getting experts in field to examine this theater, obtaining informed opinions from experts in the field. None of, and you don't have a single expert in field here on what will work in this theater and what will cost. And getting experts in field who can give us informed opinions on what it costs for budgeting out whatever plan we had to make this work. We, as a group, will be gone in 90 day, within the 90-day period, and it will then just have to follow that path. Your contributions tonight and some of the ones we've already gotten will be important to giving that full information. I want you to know, she doesn't know I'm doing this, but Dory Moyer spends all day thinking about this. So she calls me today and says, guess what I just found? And so when you're thinking, what does something like this cost? She just found that as of May 19th, 2022, Osceola County is expecting $72 million in federal funds for performing, performing arts centers. And that these include two local theaters that are about the size or smaller than this area. This, that and private endowments tend to fund the arts. And so to the extent you are in that business, you are in the business of getting those funds to defray your own costs and expenses. And, and we think that's important too. But, you know, we've all been working on this how long now? And only Dory bothers to find out that there was $72 million allotted to the county last month. Well, I'm, I'm impressed. So here's the final word on this. You know, we're going to absorb your comments tonight and all the comments that we get in writing. We're going to sharpen what we suggest should be done. We've just given you broad strokes, but I think after, toward the end, we should be able to be more specific about what we're thinking. And turn over this final board, report to management and to the board to go from there. And, and on July 31st, we're taking a vacation. So with that, let me, let me tell you what your neighbors think. Eight people sent an email. The first one, Barbara C. says include room for an indoor walking and running track. Maxine S. says keep both theaters, one for performing arts and one for movies, one for movies and one for dinner theater. Raul M. says keep theater one as a normal theater and theater two for Disney films. Not everyone agrees. Scott H. wants us to use lot B for something like Best Friend's Pet Facility. Build the facility to house dogs and pets when the owners are away. I'm giving you every suggestion we've got. And, and by the way, it may not be a bad idea, but that's not what we're doing. Mark C. says, don't convert the theater to office space. Turn it into a farmer's market like the Plant Street Market in Winter Garden. One theater for food and drinks and another one involving rotating farmer's markets within the building. Ken M. Lexon should let us have the space for nothing. Because it'll bring a lot of customers to their stores. And, and at least until there's an equitable arrangement found. And he also says teens will be teens and they'll never go where you want them to, but maybe it'll work out. That's okay. By this, I'm trying to point out that we'll take any opinion you have. And we accept it and want to write it down and give it cred. Gary C. appreciates the transparency and communication, supports something being done with the theater like movies and performing arts. Kimberly L. read the report and recommends we contact the Franklin Theater in Williamson County, Tennessee, because they converted historic theater into a performing arts center and it's enhanced the value of the town. Okay, your turn.
Thank you, Paul. Well done. And to the team, all that's come out of our, all of our meetings and he put it together. And he's also, I call him Marson Marion. He's, he's puts everything together so well. All of our thoughts in such a very smart fashion. We do appreciate your time on that. I'm just going to ask Danny, I want to thank you again for, I mean, you really have turned these things around. And Lauren, for, for turning yours around to us and putting it on the teams. So if you want to see any of these things, it is also on the teams. And, and thank you, Lauren, for doing that. She turns it around very quickly as well. But Danny, I just want to say if you would like to say a few words on what you've, your thoughts before we move forward. I think we'd all like to hear a little bit, if you don't mind.
Your original one or the most recent?
Eight fifty-one.
Oh, eight fifty-one.
The theater, there are a hundred different possibilities and they're all good. One thing, a lot of you can have all these meetings at theater too, which is free up, no, really. They all see all the formal meetings.
Just taking his time, sorry. I'll get there. You want the most recent one?
Oh, that's good. Gary did one, two, three and four. You did fairly well.
Do you want me to fill it in or leave it like this?
Fill in area five.
I can't do that.
I gotta get closer.
Go ahead. You need a mic.
Can you point there?
Only with my finger.
Let me try to point. You've got the P on area five as taking this section and making a second story out of it also. And that's really not feasible. Point up to the, keep for that. So that area five, what you talked about could be the teen center. What's the blue? Is that area to the left, the blue to the left?
Area two.
Okay, area two. That's filling in a piece of the courtyard and that could be one or two stories. But you could also take the meeting room at the far end, make it two stories. So you basically turn it down, but that building is not, is kind of attached to this building, but it, it wouldn't really be a big disruption. So you could have a lot of square footage doing that.
Over five is what you're talking about?
Over five, not, not the P, but we're.
Two stories on that and two stories on the blue.
Yes. So that would be out of commission for a while, but the rest of the building would be, be fine. The problem with the great hall here, we've talked about adding a second story, but when you do that, you need an elevator and two stairs, which would be difficult. It would take up a third of the space that's available there. And it would destroy the great hall and it would be very disruptive. So if you took the building, the freestanding building, I think I said how many script, did I put how many script?
Forty-four hundred.
I didn't bring my class.
It's forty-four hundred.
Okay. So anyway, that, I mean, the little ones, going out this way, going out the other way. And one thing you didn't address was the handicap access in the front, which needs to happen. I think you can build a ramp straight from the straps down to the sidewalk, which would be not, not true. The yellow used to be the media center when this building opened. It's the teaching academy, so it's just some walls to take down. So that'd be a meeting room. I'm concerned about how much office space you need and whether or not the little blue addition is enough for you. We'd have to really start laying out what you need and you might need to take the yellow area. You still might need that for office. But the, the biggest advantage is taking the area five and the blue and adding forty-four inch graffiti. Plus I think the blue is eighteen seventy, so you could double that, thirty, thirty-seven, forty, forty-four hundred, seventy, eight hundred, whatever. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're going to just go down the list, but if you've thought of something subsequently, we'll, you can, we'll just have you raise your hand at the end when, when we've gone through these. So first on the list is Chris, if you want to, Christopher, if you want to come up and say a few comments.
Good evening, distinguished members of the advisory committee, members of the Crowa Board, the Grand Mayor's Team and fellow residents of our beautiful town. I would like to begin by thanking this committee for the incredible work that they had achieved so far in such a short span of time to answer the directives posed by the Crowa Board. If the purpose of the committee was to recommend the best solution for a performing arts and rec center, then the questions posed by the board limited the committee's ability to fully compare the available options in town and ultimately narrowed the scope so much that it may have eliminated the best solution for our community. The committee's recommendation with regard to the eight fifty-one building as continued office space and an after-school recreation space makes sense as the use of lot B for outdoor recreational activities. The floor plan drawings of the town movie theater provide nice options, particularly the version with the largest flex room to allow for backstage and green room space. And while the town movie theater could be remodeled, any investment into that structure ultimately would not belong to the community. We are so fortunate in our town to have a wealth of options that could both fit our needs and would allow the community to own its investment after renovations or building from scratch. For example, the Stetson Building, while recently purchased, still sits empty. With no tenants, the new owner could be convinced to sell or lease with an option to buy, something Lexon will never be able to do with the movie theater. As for empty lots in town, the committee determined that lot B, with its small size and lack of parking and facilities, was best suited as an outdoor recreational location. But when thinking about available lot space, surely the large commercial lot along Celebration Boulevard cannot be ignored as a possible solution that would allow the community to build from the ground up and to precisely meet our needs for performance and rec center. The impetus to form this special committee began with the new availability of new. But to know what all the options are, true side-by-side comparisons of all feasible possibilities should be looked at with an open mind and in great detail. It is my hope that in the time remaining before the committee is dissolved, that the Crowa Board would ask the committee to fully consider the Stetson Building and the open lot on Celebration Boulevard. That the committee would have the ability to fully consider an in-depth analysis of these two options in the same way they so articulately detailed the nuances of the other three venues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. We appreciate that. Okay, next on the list is Merle.
I just put my, my name down because I didn't know whether I'd have anything to say or not. One thing that I did think of while you were looking at this building is what about the possibility of going out from this building over the parking lot with a second level? You know how you see buildings on cement pillars and they're up there? I don't know. Maybe something to consider. I don't know what, 12 feet times three? I mean, I don't see any reason to do that unless you're changing the actual size of these rooms to make those wider spaces. I mean, 12 feet, really, what is 12 feet here? Storage space. I like the idea of the, the movie theater, the movie theater with a flex space on the right makes more sense than moving offices over there, to my thinking. Since we're talking about management's offices, we talked about offices and they're already comfortably here. It seems easier maybe to add that 12 feet on for those spaces that you need to add on for Island Village. And I think the idea of putting two floors on the back of the activities room sounds like a decent amount of square footage. Other than that, I love what Chris says. Thank you.
Thank you, Merle. Okay, next is, I think, Anne on Anne. Hi, Anne.
Hello. First, I, I agree with what you've heard already. This is impressive as heck. Everything that you have done and what, how you started it out with this many people from anywhere, not just Celebration, but coming in and tackling this huge thing, even though you were very clear in laying out, look, Crowa asked us to answer specific questions. Even that specificity, this is just a, a huge thing. And I hope that you are not being, being too bummed out by any kerfuffles that are emerging from our expressive community. Because what you are doing for all of us, that you agreed to come together and do this, the research that went into that presentation and Paul, your presentation of it. You have taken this universe of linguine and put it into very understandable and digestible categories. So well done, I say to all of you, and thank you very much for this. This is exciting. I am excited about this. This is such a cool thing. We're looking at this. I agree with everything that Chris said. I agree that it would be fabulous now that you are doing your work with that finite goal. And I encourage you all, really do excellent vacation after this. But I do love the idea that Crowa might now expand and maybe yet another bunch of people. You know, don't burn you out, but somebody else, I'm not volunteering, but somebody else to look at some of these other things. Because I know everybody who's paying attention to this keeps eyeballing Stetson. What up? What up with Stetson, for instance, as the big thing, which isn't part of yours? So I'm not saying you go there. You, you've gone all the places you're supposed to go. I am so glad that you have taken Casey's work into account. It called my husband and I went to Casey's presentation long ago about the theater. I thought, yay! Because when we decided to move to Celebration a few years ago, I'm sure we're not alone. Who hasn't come into this town and seen that movie theater and thought, wow, that is a cool piece of architecture? And it looks in great shape. And then we find, and it's closed. So the idea of doing something with that, and thank you so much for all those pictures of what was inside. It's dazzling what's, what's in there. Thank you so much for that. I, I really like Casey's idea about the, keep the big theater, the whole idea of the screen being possibly retractable or moved so that can also be the big performance space. And then the second space being more flexible. And I remember what you had said, Casey, about talking to corporate entities who might be interested in renting that space out for, for big events and that you'd already gotten interest from them. What corporation wouldn't want to send its convention now that we're in person and doing conventions again? Who wouldn't want to come to this little gem of a place? House them at Bohemian, have them do fun stuff at the theater, spend their money at local restaurants? Yee-haw! And if it's got a nice leveled wood floor, so we can be doing other things, that is just really, really exciting.
Thank you very much.
And even with the 12 feet thing, based on what you just said about not having storage. Great. So now 12 times three, you got, you know, a bunch of square feet of storage. And who has it, who wouldn't like more storage in their homes, you know? So it's all good.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I do want to say thank you to Casey for, Tom and Jim reached out to Casey and he was gracious enough to meet with them to, to allow us to have some of these, some of this information. So I do want to thank you again, Casey. Okay, next is Paul Dunley, I believe. Dunlap, Paul Dunlap.
I think my wife wrote that, just like her first name.
I think my wife wrote that, just like her first name.
We talk better than we write.
Anyway, I, I too, and tagging on what Anna was saying, would thank all of you for the hard work that you've done with this and really good work. And I just want to, for everybody who's here and folks online and everything, I know there's a lot of ideas floating around. There's a lot of stuff on social media. Some of it's accurate, some of it's inaccurate. People have a lot of opinions. Some things are realistic, some things are way out in left field. And all of that is good. And we have to really start to get down to realities of what is possible, what is financially feasible, and what would be the most benefit to the most people. Not everyone's going to get everything. That's not the way these things work. But everybody can get a little something. And that's called compromise. And I want everybody just to be open to this. Open to the idea of maybe you have to let something go to then bring space to bring something in that could be even better. And the other thing I think we have to really be careful of, and this was stated actually last night at the Crowa meeting by Jackson, I think he stated it wonderfully, we have to be kind to each other. This is a special town. When Anna and I found this, we thought, oh, it's pretty. Oh, it's very pretty, very nice. But not until we lived here did we really find out how special it is. There's not a lot of places like this. We have very good neighbors and they're good people. And we have to remember that always, that when we talk to each other, no matter about what, we have to keep that openness and to know that we're all in this community together. And that's just not pie in the sky, that's a reality. So please let be kind to each other. And thank you again, and Casey, thank you. That presentation was an eye-opener. And one thing that, just the last thing, finding out how good a shape that theater was in is astounding. Because there was a lot of rumors, a lot of kind of stuff going around, and you go, whoa, that thing is in pretty good shape. For whatever Lexon is or isn't, they actually took care of the space. So dare I say thank you to them? I, with qualifiers, but okay. But thank you again very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're, if there's anybody else in the room that has any questions, comments that they'd like to come up at this time, before I move on to the online, those online, please feel free to raise your hand or just come forward.
I just have a question.
Yes.
What happens at ninety days? No, I mean, that was for you, but like, when does Lexon pull the opportunity out from under us?
Well, what, what we will do, as I said, part three, you want to get that first? Part three is going to be comments and suggestions and so on and so forth that we have received. We also have, we, you know, we're going to have another meeting before, because of vacation. And we're going to really delve into everything that has been suggested for all the different entities. Then we're going to, Paul's going to continue on, we're going to have part three. Here, here's, similar to what he read earlier, here's what different folks have suggested that these things could be. And at that point in time, we're going to conclude the summary and it'll be the final summary. Then we will turn it over to, to the Crowa Board. Now, what they, if we finish before that, if they, you know, have been asking us a few extra questions, if they, it's up, it'll be up to the Board and Management at that time to determine what's, what's the next step. But we will conclude what we have and then go from there. And then that they could get that, what has also been proposed was to have designers and planners and so on and so forth come in and with the suggestions that we have. We have also, and we're going to be discussing this a little bit more, have looked at other theaters that are similar in the area and what is popular and then what new things that are going on. Like we said, the esports, these, like Winter Park and other theaters are now moving into these cabaret type of dinner clubs and this and that and the other. You know, the options are endless, but I think that it, once they, they really have to get a designer and see how much that would cost and so on and so forth. Now, as far as all the financial things, the Finance Committee and the Board are working on that end. And then you have to determine, you know, as you said, is it, is it, do you go out to another location? Do you, do you talk about that? That'll be for the Board to make that determination.
So that's where we are. Lexon doesn't have a date that they're like, sorry, you can't be discussing this anymore? I mean.
Um, they, they, we were given the ninety days. Now, as far as any of that negotiations or any conversations, we really don't know much about them. We're just proposing what we have based on the directive that we were given.
They haven't talked to us. They're talking to whoever the appropriate people are on the Board and Management. We're just, we're just homeowners. Not talking to them. So whatever negotiations follow are from the proper places.
You're right.
The management company hire and the Board you elected.
And they're still doing other work behind the scenes too, Lawrence, daily doing things. One question in the back?
As far as the seventy-two million that might be available in funding for an arts center, do you know who the other two groups are that are eligible for that funding?
Well, there's two in Osceola County. One is the Osceola Arts, and I believe that's the one on Orange Blossom. But it is on the one on Orange Blossom, and I think that's the one where the school is.
No, Osceola Arts is on one ninety-two.
No. No, Osceola Arts is on one ninety-two, yes, towards St. Cloud. But there's the other art center on Orange Blossom.
That's the school.
Right, no, I think that's one of the ones that's also on the list. There's one on. I believe so. See, so you have to understand too, another thing and part of our research is that if you have people to get grants, I mean, you can get, you know, lots of money in grant. If you're arts or you have education, you can get, you get grants much easier. If you have arts and education, and a lot of the programs downtown, the CFC, I think, C?
CFC Arts.
Right. And they, they have both, and they, they've actually expanded to the point where they now have schools. The one in Tampa, also same thing. So, so if you have that, and then children, and then you add seniors, and you do, that's what they're looking for to give grant money to. So yes, I think that one of the reasons is, is because it is a school. And I think the other one is, and the other one on the Osceola Arts, also, from what I understand, a lot of their programs, summer programs, summer camps, summer schools, actually they're making up funding to actually keep the thing moving forward all year round and everything else that's subsequent.
We had vendors approach Crowa about doing that in this community, but we decided that there wasn't enough space. I was at that meeting, attendance. So I think that that would open some possibilities too. And Osceola Art Center on one ninety-two does have those kind of programs on the patron there. And, but that's grown over time.
That has, yes. We, we, we did all the history on that as well. And it's very similar to, to our.
It would be very similar to what you proposed.
Right, because they have about three hundred and twenty-five seats and they're large, and they have about ninety seats in their smaller black box. And then their foyer area is dedicated to the arts. And they have traveling exhibits that come to, and then now they have started also expanding out into the school systems. So that's why I think that they're, you know, getting a nod on this, so.
We have partner programs here who could very easily go into that space. My reservation is entering into any kind of an agreement with Lexon that we don't own.
Right, we understand that.
I have a big problem with that. They have not proven to be a reliable or trustworthy partner. And I, I think that if they're willing to sell us the theater, I think we should entertain that. But to rent from them and to dump all these millions of dollars into renovations and things like that just seems like good money after dad's teeth.
Okay, and we hear you. Thank you.
I think it's a betrayal to the people who have lived in downtown and gone through a war with Lexon to have their properties just waterproofed, just demolished. I think it's stealing the trail to those.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so if there's no other audience comments?
I just want to say, I completely agree with her.
Okay, you're going to have to come up to them, we can't hear you if you want to come to them.
I completely agree with her. I think going into business with Lexon for something that we're never going to own, we're going to dump all that money into it, is a very big mistake. I think we should be taking that money and fixing up Celebration. We got parks and everything around here that look horrible right now. We got houses that people aren't, aren't taking care of, that you guys should be going after them about.
Well, they are doing, I mean, if you attended the meeting last night, you will see, they are definitely hitting the parks and the landscaping.
I got a little bit dirt on my drip.
I know.
We need to go after the bigger things, but to spend money on something like that, we're never going to own as Celebration residents, is a very big mistake. If we can get the sense of building, I think that's the way to go. We can expand on this building, that's the way to go. It's ours, it belongs to us.
We hear you.
As residents.
Thank you.
Can I just ask that the last two people give us their names so we can write it down?
Sure, Armon, A-R-M-A-N-D, last name's Mota, M-O-T-T-A.
Thank you.
I apologize, I came a little bit late, so I don't know if you guys are recovering all this, but I just think.
Doesn't matter if we did, you're, you're welcome to say what you have to say.
And if, yeah.
And your name?
Carol, C-A-R-O-L, last name George, G-E-O-R-G-E. Do you need an address also?
No, just want to know who you are and say hi. Thank you.
If, if, can you come up, would you mind coming up here so we could hear you a little bit better?
And for the online.
And for the online.
Hi, my name is Christina Burnley. Again, sorry for my getup, I was in the middle of an exercise. But I wanted to thank you like everybody else. You've given your time and it's greatly appreciated. And I also wanted to commend you because I know a lot of people can't be here. And I know a lot of young families and everybody has a lot of stuff that they do. And I know you guys are also tipping into account emails and what people are saying, so that's greatly appreciated. I'm agreeing with their sentiments as well, that I think adding a community center is a great idea. But I think putting it in the theater downtown probably isn't the best idea. I think that's probably meant for something that's a private organization or a nonprofit like Casey. I think it's a really great space and would make a really great theater, performing arts center, and that would be a great addition to the community. I just don't think we should do it. I think that maybe the community center should be somewhere else and we should make an investment into our community and not at least with Lexon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could you come up here, please?
I just want to say I agree.
Okay.
I was assuming that this, that the theater would be purchased and owned by Crowa.
Right. And, and, and the, the iconic buildings in Celebration are all under one entity. So they can't sell one off, they're all combined. So it's a, it's sort of an all or none deal. They, they all are part of one lease, one ownership and so on. So they can't sell. I mean, if the CDD wanted to, you know, buy the one building, but you cannot. So that is not an option. And as in our report, it states there that it is not an option to buy one.
I'm just voicing my agreement.
We hear you. And what was your name?
Virginia Barry.
Thank you, Virginia.
And Victor Campanelli, who also agreed.
Okay. Any, anyone else in the room? Okay, so we're going to go on, online, we have, hand up, Quinn? Quins? The Quins? The Quins? If you want to unmute yourself. Quins, unmute yourself and. Okay, we'll come back to you. We'll do go to Amber Strausberger, Strausberger?
Good evening, thank you very much for your time. I do want to acknowledge all the work that has gone into the presentation. So I definitely don't want to be the naysayer in the group. I do believe some pieces of information are missing that are pertinent to the decision-making process. Whether it's the old college building or whether it is the, the theater, I, I recommend asking questions of the organizations that either maintain or represent the owners of those buildings, such as, is there prior litigation? Do they have a reputation of taking care of the facilities? Do they have a reputation of honoring their commitments, legal or otherwise? What, what is their system of maintaining records for maintenance when they get called upon? If it is an organization that does, say, own the downtown buildings, has the Advisory Board spoken with the commercial entities that currently rent from the owning organization to see what their satisfaction is regarding maintenance, customer service, responsiveness? We're not just renting something, we're, we're potentially going into a relationship, not with someone. Unlike a marriage that's only two people and, you know, maybe a small amount of family, we're talking thousands of residents that are getting into this relationship. So my advice to the committee is to maybe go back and do some additional research regarding the relationship aspect. What is the reputation of the individual that owns it, per se? And I'm not picking on any one person, but no matter what we choose, those are things that definitely have to be answered, that may or may not satisfy some of the residents out there. And just to make it very clear, I am also a resident of the TCCA, just like some others there. That's why I'm posing that we get full disclosure from all the folks that we're looking at. Thank you, period of time.
Thank you. Do we have the Quins back?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Proceed.
Okay, I want to thank the committee for the information that they delivered to the community. Unfortunately, the information provided tonight was not the same. I find it very slighted to the Lexon-owned property. And I find it absolutely appalling that this community would even think of going into an agreement with Lexon Properties, who has time and time again screwed over the residents of this community. I find it appalling. And if you continue to call it the theaters, the this, the that, it is a Lexon property. And you need to bring that to the front. Tonight's presentation was great. It was incredibly one-sided. And I am appalled that you did not share that with all of the residents of this community before this meeting. How can you do that? We have this rendering, we have that rendering that we've never had before. And you call this inclusive? It is not inclusive. Anyone who has lived here more than five years, ten years, knows what this town has gone through with Lexon. And excuse my voice, I have COVID. And I'm still here tonight presenting. I am adamant about this. Talk to the people who live in this town, up and down Water Street, in downtown Bloom Street, everywhere. The water infiltration into their condominiums, the people who have left and lost money. How can you even, even consider going into an agreement with Lexon? This is not the AMC Theater, this is not the Theater Downtown. It is not an Icon Dory. It has been an Isor. How many times have you seen the posts? They couldn't even keep the lights working. And you think we can go ahead and enter into an agreement? Who's making money off of this? It's definitely not the people who lived downtown from the beginning.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
No.
Thank you.
Dory. No, Dory, I'm tired of you cutting me off.
I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry.
Dory? Dory?
You're allowed three minutes. Okay, and just, everyone's allowed three minutes, so everyone has an opportunity because we only have about twenty minutes left, so it's important that everybody has an opportunity to speak. And just to clarify, A, it, there are, they are called them iconic buildings. it, there are, they are called them iconic buildings. And and there are certain designers that came in when Celebration was developed. So um I just want you to understand that I'm not calling it specifically. That is what they have been called from the get-go. And just also understand that, as we stated in the very beginning, that we were given three directives. We were not given opportunities to go on to different things. And uh this was our directive. And um we were not to go outside of that directive. If they, if if the board and management chooses to later on, they may. But this is, this is the first step. So you just have to have the opportunity to go through the process, and that's what we're doing. And I think it's important that the board, you know, does this, because it's important that we identify the different things, identify the facts that this building in particular works well for management to work here and have meetings here, because they often have meetings back to back to back. So um you know, I understand your, your frustration, but you have to understand, this is the directive. We follow the directive. And and things may be added on later, but that, at this point in time, this is where we are. So with that said, I'm going to go to the next person on the list. Online is Keith Thompson. Keith?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
All right, thanks. I actually wasn't gonna speak tonight, because I've made my feelings on Lexon and the fact that we're having any discussions with them perfectly clear on numerous occasions at board meetings. Um but I do actually echo a little bit of what was just said in that the whole slant of tonight's meeting was actually totally different to the meeting that you guys had last week. And it would have been nice to have had a slide with some of the negatives to do with each of the options. And some of that goes to ownership and it goes to whether we own it or who does actually own it and who would be in business with. However, I I actually wanted to say thanks to you guys. I think you were given an impossible task. You were given three options only. You were given no financial information or not to consider the financials. So I think, given that, you've all done an incredible job, and I mean that sincerely. The one thing that I would say to, you know, we've been talking about grants and everything else, and that's all been focused on the theater. But if that is for a performing arts center, that does not have to be at the Theater Downtown. That presumably be, would be wherever that activity was housed. So that should not be seen as something that would only apply to the theater. And when it comes to the, the making profit out of it, we're an HOA. We're not a commercial enterprise. It's up to a commercial enterprise if they want to take over something and make a profit. My understanding is that the theater group couldn't get funding because the business plan did not do that. And if a, if a private company for profit cannot do that, how, why do we think as an HOA that we're gonna make some money out of that? And, you know, to go back to the other part of it, what happens after 90 days? Lexon talked to other people, which is the way it should be. And, you know, with the best will in the world, there is absolutely no way anyone can say that is the best option with all the financial implications and everything, and enter into an LOI or an exclusivity or whatever else with Lexon. It's just physically impossible to get all of that done in the next, what is it, 39 days, 38 days, 37 days, whatever it is, until the end of the 90 days. So um that was it. I I do sincerely thank everybody on the advisory group, though. I do think you were given a thankless, impossible task, and I think you've done very well out of it. The only thing I would have liked to have seen would have been, like I said, some of the negatives as well as the pros to each of the options. Thanks.
Okay, uh last on the list we have at the moment is Charles Richards. Charles?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. I want to echo what pretty much everyone has said to this point. Uh this advisory group has really done a stellar job with carrying out the task that you were charged with. Um I I think many of the pain points we're hearing are specific to the board's overall process. And um quite frankly, what decisions have already been made to this point, I think specifically around Lexon. Um and I think more specifically what uh the final recommendations are are going to be. And and if they're going to truly act on those or go in a different direction. And and look, that's not something that the advisory group is responsible for, and I just, I want to make that clear. Um my question is mainly around, how is the advisory group planning to collect feedback from residents that can't attend this town hall? It sounded like there was maybe going to be another one. I know there's been some emails out there. I was really happy to hear Paul read those emails. That that was really reassuring. Um but are there any informal surveys that would go out or any other methods to engage the community and collect that feedback?
Well, anyone go on the team site and submit questions and comments at any time. So we have that open. Um we're not saying we're not having a second um town hall. We could have one, but we don't have one scheduled at this time. Uh we can determine that at a later time. Um and then you can reach out to any of us if you want and send us emails. Uh or send it to Lauren, and Lauren's wonderful about getting them to us. So you could send it to Lauren and then just put on there that it, you know, it's a comment for the, for the A G. So feel free to do that and send as many questions and comments as you'd like, because that's what we're doing. That's why we're here tonight. Okay? Is anything else, Charles?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Um Eileen Barr?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Uh hi, Eileen Barr, 1138 Mosaic Drive. Sorry I couldn't be with you tonight, but I'm another COVID victim. Uh but feeling much better, thank you very much. Uh I want to agree with all the last speakers, quite a few of them. I do think that you produced a very interesting presentation and put in a lot of work and very balanced. But I am deeply, deeply, deeply disappointed that, one, as was discussed at the meeting last night, the uh the last time I looked was early in the afternoon. The last financial committee, the committee of the, meeting of the finance committee, has not yet been shown. Um and that they did not have a presence at this town hall to present. If the, if the board wanted to split it up, so you guys just did one thing and the finance committee did something else, that's fine. But to ask the community to make irrational comments and discussion and evaluate this properly without having both sides, financial and planning, to me seems absurd. And 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 just, um it's, it's like living in La La Land. Who doesn't want, who doesn't want these nice things? It's a shiny object that's being held in front of a child. It sounds lovely. But for those who know me, I always ask the question. I go to those restaurants, they give me the special or what. The waiter tells me something delicious and the first word out of my mouth is, how much does it cost? And that's the question I want to ask. How much does it cost? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, just so you know, I count at least three members of the finance committee in the room tonight. Uh I am the liaison to the finance committee. They are working hard on this, but the truth is, it's too early for them to really have solid numbers. If we don't tell them what we want, they can't really price it yet. So it's our job to sharpen what we're asking for and try to make, and and give them something that they can come back with an answer. Otherwise, you get what's commonly referred to in their profession as swag. Do you know what swag stands for politely? I would say it would be.
I do.
Silly, okay, silly wildly aimed guesses. Uh but it has a slightly different meaning that I just don't feel like speaking here. But it's, it's worthless. I mean, how are they supposed to know what we want until we tell them what we want? And so, yes, it's a collaborative process and no, it doesn't end in 90 days. Really, what we're doing ends in 90 days. And then we fully expect that in the balance of our time and thereafter, that people are gonna figure out, is this something that the community can afford? Or how can the community afford it? And so we agree with you. We go into restaurants and do the same thing. What's the special and what's it cost? But at this point, we haven't gotten in the restaurant yet. So we're just taking it a step at a time.
Well, I'm not sure that you're taking the correct step at a time. Quite honestly, I think that the whether or not we're looking at something that is somewhere within the range of affordability actually should come first. Finance should actually be running this. They should really be the prominent one here. And unless they give the go-ahead that we are looking within the realms of possibility, then there shouldn't be any discussion at all. Just my opinion. I'm entitled to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Uh Alina?
Yeah, hello. This is Clay Hackett. Uh Alina is my wife. This is her login. Uh but hello, everybody. Thank, thanks for, for having me uh here. I just had a couple of questions, uh and maybe some others listening as well have similar questions. Um because, you know, it it seems as if this may be something we're moving toward as a community. Um so my, my two questions were, one, there was some discussion around grant money um that would be for arts and education purposes, arts and/or education purposes. So my understanding is, um because I know much earlier there was a mention of, you know, using funding for, you know, preserving existing properties and things like that, right, renovating like sports facilities and other buildings. But um that, that grant money would only be for the purposes of arts or education. Wasn't that correct?
Well. Yeah, we, we're, as, as we said, stated in the very beginning, um that we were, we're, our part of our directive really isn't to go into that at this time. Um the, if, if, and, and somebody else said too, I mean, if, if the art center ends up someplace else or, or, or um any aspect of that, that's when that would come in. That is not really our directive, so we really cannot speak to that at this time.
Sure, but I, but I, my understanding, of course, was that there would be a considerable amount of funding needed to renovate a facility like this. And it sounded as if that would need to come from uh funding like that. I may have just been under the, the wrong impression. We may have, you know, far more.
Not exactly. Yeah, it would not, it would not necessarily be for a building or anything like that. It's just one of those things that they use to um enhance programs and bring programs in. But again, that's really not under our directive. So uh if that were to take place, that would take place uh through the board and management. So we really can't speak to that.
Gotcha. And then the other, the other question that I had was just around, uh you know, of, of course, most of the discussion tonight uh from the commenters has been about not going into business with Lexon. But if we were to rent from Lexon and to renovate the property, um I would imagine something could be negotiated where, um you know, if we're, if we're putting quite a lot of uh money into the building itself as renters, um that, that's some sort of a de- decrease in the amount that we would be spending on rent could be negotiated, something like that. I would just hope that that would be taken into consideration. I don't know if that's been part of the discussion already.
I, I think there has been discussion, but that's not part of our directive or discussion at this time. But I think that they have to have had some discussion, but that's not under our provision at this time. Anything else? Uh I think that's uh. Kevin Kirby? Oh, are you done?
Yeah, no, that's, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Clay. Uh Kevin Kirby?
Hi, Dory. Hi, committee. Hi, uh board and everybody in the audience. First, uh I'll definitely echo the thank yous to you all, um not only for all the hard work that you've definitely done, but for taking frankly, all the hits sitting up in the front of the audience while the crow board sits in the audience watching it. Um you guys have been put in a very challenging position, a very hard task, and you've been put within your parameters, do as I say. Um and that is the perception and the optics that I have, just as somebody outside of, of that board. Um I will go ahead and echo what I've said since the time that I was on the board, when this conversation came up six months, a year ago. Uh and that is, we are a homeowners association. Our membership believes in ownership. Our bylaws reflect on ownership. And by us going into a rental-style relationship is a concern to me. Um and it sounds as though that's a concern to many in the community. Um we go ahead, we always like to reference our surveys, right? Our board loves to go ahead and reference our surveys. Parking has consistently been a number one comment on that survey. And I'd like to go ahead and hear how this is going to be addressed um when it comes to bringing more into the community area, not just for our tourists, that we love to welcome for restaurants and businesses. But again, that's not the business that the HOA, the homeowners association, is in. So I'd like to go ahead and see how that would be addressed first. Second, the um any large relationship that we've gotten into as Crow, especially, you know, the management company, we go ahead and we vet our vendors. Uh we go ahead and do, just as I believe Amber said before, we go ahead and ask those hard questions, really know what we are doing and getting our membership involved with. Um and I'd like to go ahead and see that regardless of who we go ahead and do, whether that's purchasing a parcel on the boulevard to do an increase or or whatever it may be. Um but like I said, it, it's challenging to see that you all were put and kind of cornered into a spot um with a parcel lot B that was too small for what you need. For 851, that would be too expensive or takeaway or cause challenges. And point us back to a theater that just looks like it's a ready-to-go type of a situation. Um I'd like to see us see something that we did with the 851 building, which is purchasing, owning, and continuing success on. So I I commend you all for, for taking this on, and I wish you the best continuing through July 31st. And truly hope that on behalf of the community, you, you assist in making the best decision.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. Um I think we are pretty much at the end. Uh you could probably take one more question if anybody has it out in the audience. If not, then I think, uh let's go, um anybody on the committee up here in the group? Anybody have any comments? Okay, then we will, again, I want to thank Lauren for all your time that you put into making all this possible. Thank you again, Danny, Casey, and everyone else who's come on tonight. We really appreciate it. And we're going to yield back now to Jackson to adjourn the meeting. Or any other comments?
Uh no, I don't have any comments. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate all of the comments. Uh we appreciate all the work of the advisory group. Uh I would uh look for a motion to adjourn from the board.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.